I'd like to call to order the Water Works Board meeting for Wednesday, August 13th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance would you apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for St. John Detective Aaron Ampey, badge number thirty-two, commander of the Northwest Regional SWAT Team. Thank you. Mr. Gorman, will you please take roll call for the Water Works, please take roll call?
Sure, Madam President. Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis.
Here.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Deputy Chief Steve McNamara. Park Superintendent John Novosich.
Sir.
IT AJ Garcia. NICE Engineering Neil Simstad. Public Works Director Chad Nandorf.
Here.
Director of Operations Andrew Hanson.
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman, here. Recording Secretary Robin Teal.
Thank you. The Water Works Board consists of myself, Robin Arvenitis, Kevin Conley, and Caleb Johnson. First on the agenda, we have the minutes of the July ninth, ninth, two thousand twenty-five public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I was gonna say, that's, that's a mistake. Caleb Johnson is not a member of the Water Works Board.
I'm sorry.
It's Tom Schmidt.
Would you like to be tonight?
Can be if you'd like.
There is a typo, the Water Works Board consists of myself, Robin Arvenitis, Kevin Conley, and Tom Schmidt.
There you go.
So, um, once again, first on the agenda are the minutes of, thank you Caleb, July ninth, two thousand twenty-five public meeting.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved three to zero. Next on the agenda, we have claims. Are there any additional claims, Mr. Gorman?
No additional claims, Madam President.
Motion to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favors, say aye.
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 Claims are approved three to zero. Next on the agenda, we have reports. Are there any staff reports for the Water Works Board meeting?
No reports.
Are there any council member reports regarding the Water Works Board meeting?
No ma'am.
Moving on. We have no old business, we have no new business. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Water Works Board meeting? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Stormwater Board for August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. It is now six thirty-three PM. The, uh, roll call for the Stormwater Board is slightly different than the Water Works Board. It is myself as president, Tom Schmidt Vice President, Robin Arvenitis as member. The first agenda item is minutes of the July ninth, twenty twenty-five public meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Mr. Gorman, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Pleasure of the Board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Are there any reports from staff regarding stormwater?
No reports, Mr. President.
Any reports from council members regarding the Stormwater Board?
No.
I have one, just one quick question. Chad, how much rain did Sheriff get in that, in that down, major downfall?
I have not received the updated rainfall total from the wastewater treatment plant superintendent. Um, it usually comes out a week after or so. Um, I think the system with as dry as it's been, handled everything well. I know it rained hard, but everything's pretty much empty ditch-wise and retention pond-wise, so we were able to, uh, handle the, uh, the rains that came yesterday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There is, uh, no new business, uh, sorry, no old business and no new business. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Stormwater Board? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. The time is six thirty-five PM. Uh, in terms of roll call, the Redevelopment Commission is comprised of the entire town council. Uh, first business, minutes of the July ninth, twenty twenty-five public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five-zero. Claims, any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Pleasure of the Board. Motion to pay the claims.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five-zero. Any reports from staff and redevelopment?
Uh, the only report I have, Mr. President, is the twenty-two West Joliet property. We did send out packets to numerous developers as well as restaurateurs to, uh, help stimulate, uh, selling that property off for a restaurant and a retail, um, development. So, we have a deadline of, uh, November, some, first week of November, so we should be getting some interest on that property soon, we hope.
I know we signed on with the Lake County Economic Alliance. Any activity on their end?
I have not heard, but, uh, I, I know they said they were gonna promote it. Yeah, we sent it to them as well.
All right, let's follow up with them too. All right, thank you. Um, any reports from council members?
Mr. President, uh, Jim, is that, that's a pretty extended period of time, right?
It is. Yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of work to put together to, uh, come up with a proposal, so...
No, no, I mean that, I mean, you're, you're collecting them all the way till November?
Yep, three months.
And that's, that's pretty common, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think during that three-month period, we can continue marketing.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions? From council members, anything? No? Okay, uh, no old business, no new business. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned.
Good evening, I'd like to call a Utility Board meeting, uh, for Wednesday, August thirteenth. Uh, the time is six thirty-eight PM. The roll call stays the same as the previous board on the redevelopment, and the first item is the minutes of the July ninth public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Next item's claims, any additional claims for utilities, Mr. Gorman?
Uh, no additional claims, Mr. President.
Motion to pay the claims.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Reports, any reports from staff regarding utilities?
I do have one report regarding the, uh, biosolids building down at the wastewater treatment plant. As I discussed last meeting, um, they started working on the, pouring the, uh, footings and foundations on the south side for Phase Two, so that is ongoing as we speak. The, uh, completion date, I believe, for that entire building would be sometime in November.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman.
You're welcome.
Any other reports from staff? Our town engineer, any reports on utilities?
No reports, Mr. President.
Any report from council members?
No reports.
Okay, we'll move right into, we have no old business and we have no new business. At this time, we'll take business from the floor regarding utilities. Any business from the floor regarding utilities? If not, this meeting's adjourned, we'll move right into the town council meeting.
I'd like to call the town council meeting to order for, uh, Wednesday, August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five at six forty. The roll call will stay the same as the utility board. So at this time, I ask for, uh, the minutes of the July ninth, twenty twenty-five public meeting, pleasure of the Board.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five-zero. Claims, any more additional claims, Jim?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Pleasure of the Board.
Motion to approve claims.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries five-zero.
Uh, at this time, Jim, we'll do, uh, reports.
Sure, Mr. President. Chief Patterson, do you have any reports?
I'd just like to report for the month of July, the fire department ran two-hundred-and-seventy-seven EMS-related calls, seventy-three fire-related calls, for a total of three-hundred-and-fifty calls. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Chief Sormas.
Thank you, Jim. Now, I'd like just to thank all of our, uh, residents and vendors that came out to our annual national night out on August fifth at Reader Park. We had over thirty-six vendors there, hundreds of residents that came out, and, uh, we thanked them for coming and supporting us every year, and also the town admin and the staff for setting up, and then all the council members for attending that. So it was a big turnout this year, thank you.
Yeah, chief, this year was very impressive.
It was great, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Novosich?
Thank you, Jim. Uh, just wanna mention, we have a new event this weekend, Pensy Pints and Performers, right out here on the, uh, Joliet Street. It's gonna be Friday from four to eleven-thirty, Saturday from two to eleven-thirty. We got eighteen food vendors, uh, six bands, so there's live music. Shererville Lounge and Greg's Place are gonna provide liquid refreshments, of course you have to pay for them. Um, Chambers is gonna do the corn roast on Saturday, so, and we have a bike ride at one o'clock on Saturday, a five-mile ride from Reader Park to Plum Creek and back here, so, hope to see everyone, come on out. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Novosich. Mr. Simstad, any reports?
No reports, Mr. Gorman.
Mr. Nandorf.
Thank you. Um, just a couple updates, the Burr Street reconstruction project, the, uh, majority of the old roadway has been milled out. South end of the project from Seventy-Fifth to near the Rolling Hills subdivision has had the existing stone base removed and replaced with new stone base. Water main installation work will resume tomorrow on the north end near Seventy-third Avenue. Uh, we're still on, we're still on date for the October reopening of the road as we previously talked about. Number two, uh, the Rolling Hills Park Public Works is excavated for new sidewalk sections inside, uh, the park for the approach to the shelter and near the playground and, um, trail area. Um, they're gonna be poured this Friday. A new water service line was installed for an ADA water fountain, uh, last week, and, um, additional trail work is forthcoming. We'll be removing the existing trail and replacing it with an eight-foot wide trail. Um, Public Works will be doing all the removal, widening, and stone base with milestone contractors performing the asphalt service on the trail. And finally, Street Department crews have completed the twenty-twenty-five in-house concrete list with two-hundred-and-eighty-nine sections of sidewalk replaced, seven-hundred-and-thirty feet of curb, and thirty-one ADA domes throughout the town. That's all I have.
Great update, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Mr. Hanson?
No reports.
Thank you. I have no reports either. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any reports from council members?
No, sir.
I just have, uh, one to, uh, just inform. This was an appointment to the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority. Uh, attorney John Buscemi was, uh, the, the, our choice at the time. Um, he sent a resignation letter only because he is moving to Valparaiso unfortunately. And, uh, so the, my appointment, uh, for this, uh, position will be attorney Jim Weezer. So that's just FYI for everyone. Um, at this time, I will take any po, uh, public comments regarding the agenda items tonight. Any comments?
Should we, Mr. President, should we make a motion to amend our agenda to remove item E then?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to remove agenda item E, which was the appointment to the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority, uh, to replace the, the resigning member. That's not an agenda item, that's just an appointment, so we, we just need to remove that.
So I'll second. Caleb's motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five-zero. Thank you.
Ma'am, go ahead and step, step up.
State your name and your address, please.
My name is Suzanne Gonzalez.
Ma'am, can you pull the mic closer to you, or pull it out?
My dad usually says I'm loud enough, but I guess not. My name's Suzanne Gonzalez, fourteen forty-five Autumn Drive. I'm here in support of something that you're going to hear about later, but I wanna speak about it now. Our veterans deserve a museum. If you're ever a student of Mr. Clark, you know the, sorry. This is kinda to my heart, so if I start crying, I'm sorry. If you're ever a student of Mr. Clark, you know the amount of war artifacts, flags, medals, and other personal information from local soldiers that he has collected. My stepfather, David Davis, and all soldiers deserve their story to be told. Mr. Clark's items all need to be on display so we never forget what our soldiers have done for us. I'd like to now read some lyrics from Toby Keith. "I will always do my duty, no matter what the price. I've counted up the cost, and I know the sacrifice. I don't wanna die for you, but if dying's asked of me, I'll bear that cross with honor, 'cause freedom don't come free." David Davis Senior died July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, from cancer caused by his service and being around burn pits. Please don't let my dad or any other veteran's service be in vain. I'm asking you to honor all the men and women, especially those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. Support a veterans museum at the Illiana Speedway, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else pertaining to agenda items tonight? Seeing and hearing none?
There is.
Lot of.
Okay, I'm sorry. State your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Pat O'Donnell, and I'm a resident of Hammond. And I'm here to ask this council to give us a place to move a museum, because there are so many veterans organizations in Lake County, and we've picked this city to have our veterans museum, because this is the crossroads of the nation, Shererville, Indiana. And this new veterans museum that we're naming, the Crossroad Veterans Museum, is gonna be located right here, hopefully, off of US thirty in the Illiana area. Now, a lot of veterans today are suffering from a lot of different things, and I'll try to make this as short as possible, and some of you know me here that I start going off on a tangent, but, I'm gonna say this. This veterans museum will make you proud. We will have a veterans museum here that will stand out in this country, the Crossroads National Veterans Museum. And if you give us this land and give us this opportunity, we will not let you down. We will build a museum that'll make every resident of this city, the police, the firemen, the citizens, and all you councilmen proud that you put it here. And we will fight for it, and we will fight for you to maintain it, and we will make sure that our veterans are remembered, and our nation, nation will know that Shererville stepped forward and allowed us to have this museum here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Hi Barb, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Barb Tousley, one three seven zero zero Lantern Drive, St. John. Though I live in St. John, you guys all know that I do have a, a deep love and devotion for the town of Shererville. And I'll state that my father died when I was twelve years old from war injuries suffered in World War Two. I also tell you that being part of the, uh, Triton Safety Village where the current museum is located, I have been able to see the magnificent things that our curator, Tom Clark, has done. I'll also tell you that he has containers full of items that no longer, uh, that we no longer have the room to display. We're telling you that there are, the room that we need will be filled. The room that we have will be having people come all across the country to see this absolutely wonderful museum. And I sincerely hope that all of you will support this venture. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone else addressing items on the agenda? Okay? State your name and your address for the record, sir?
Andrew Zieglewicz, um, ninety-eight thirty-five West Oakridge Drive, St. John, Indiana. Uh, I've been a SAL member for forty-two years. Um, I've, I helped, uh, build post three sixty-nine in St. John. And my father and, uh, my mother, my father's been the state commander, uh, for the state of Indiana, and my mother's been the state president, and, um, they have, they, um, they're here because they think this is a fabulous idea. I think it would be something that would be, I don't know, very advantageous to the community as well. If it's something near like the Shrine of Christ Passion, if it is that beautiful, it could be, make Shererville a more tourist destination as well. So it could be a very positive thing to the community and, um, as well to all of the veterans that gave their lives, so, thank you.
Thank you. State your name and your address, sir, for the record.
Marty Zieglewicz, ninety-eight thirty-five West Oakridge Drive, St. John, Indiana, home post of post three sixty-nine. My son was just up here. The only thing I have to say is that I've known Tom for a number of years. While I was state commander and during the time I've been post commander, he was willing to come to East Chicago and bring his memorabilia, uh, especially for our Americanism days. He's done a wonderful job, and I think with his attitude toward military memorabilia, and he showed that in his classes with his students. I think he'd be a great person to maintain this and maintain it at a new location of the old raceway. There's no doubt in my mind, it will put Shererville on the map. Thank you very much.
Thank you. State your name and your, uh, address, please, for the record.
Good evening, my name is Tony Gutierrez, and, uh, excuse me, this is the second time I've been here. Thirty years ago, I asked, we asked the town council when Tom Shanley was here, and Richard Crane, and we built that memorial across the street. He gave us the permission to do it, he gave us the access to the front of the police department there, and with gratitude, we appreciate, we, you know, it took us five years to put it together. I happened to be the treasurer, so I knew how much money went into that. And all these guys, Gutluff and Tom and Robin, we all worked together on this project for years. And what we'd like to do now is, is ask again for more property or a parcel or some type of, either an acre or two acres of property. We have a problem with Tom Clark's museum at the Safety Village because it's too small. He's got so much material that he needs to expand, and the only way we're gonna do it is if you guys give us the authorization of going forward on his project. We've got a beautiful monument right behind us here. And believe me, one thing about Shererville was, they were very veteran-friendly to everybody. And now Dyer's stepping up, but you know, it took him twenty years to get online. But, uh, with your help and with your vote, we'd appreciate anything you can do for us to help us get this project on its way. Tom Clark's needs the space, and I'd like to see it actually in my own backyard, because I lived on Burr Street for many years, and, uh, Illiana was right behind me. So I appreciate and I thank you guys for giving us this opportunity to ask for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name's, uh, David Shearman. I live at fifteen twenty-eight Tate Drive in Shererville. Um, I've only lived in town nine years, moved here from New England. In New England, we did, I never had, heard a person say to me, "Thanks for your service." We came here, I heard it everywhere I go, and there's no better way to help support all of our veterans than to help build this new facility for Tom Clark. He needs it. I volunteered at Shererville, uh, Triton Safety Village for six years while it was active, uh, with Bill, and, you know, I don't, I can't think of a better way to help support our veterans. We need it. Tom's got an abundance of stuff, as everyone said, so I wanna thank you, and let's hope we can get this done.
Thank you.
Please state your name and, um, uh, address for the record, please.
Name and number? My name is Joe Gomez Tagle, I live at ninety-four seventy-six West Oakridge Drive, St. John, Indiana, four six three seven three. I'm here in support of the National Veterans, um, Museum. And I know that there is a process that goes in order for the town to see if they could support a resolution to make this happen, if it's there, and if you wanna create one. This would be an ideal situation for the, not only Shererville, but the whole entire Lake County. As we recalled and we often talk about, Northwest Indiana or Shererville is the crossroads of the nation. Having this museum would add so much value to everyone in the community that will make you proud. First of all, for the men and women that I served with. And I know that you're here because of that. I get up every morning and I say, "I love you," because I went and I served for all of you. For you to have that opportunity through the Constitution to make this possible for everyone. If you could create or if you have a resolution to propose for this, that would be an ideal situation for all of us who have fought and died for this country. Thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Got it. Ira Zimmer, seventeen twenty, South Park Avenue, Shererville. Sixty-eight-year resident of the town. My father was a clerk treasurer, so I've been involved a little bit in politics since I was a little guy. The matter that we're speaking on, I had two brothers, Vietnam era, one served in Vietnam during the Tet Offensive, the other one was a Marine Corps F-four driver instructor. I wanna thank all you gentlemen that are here tonight, thank you for your service. My great-grandfather came from France with his three brothers. Somehow, they ended up in the Union Army. And my great-grandfather was at Appomattox. So I come from a family that, that served, and I understand the military. Um, the Marine Corps told me I was too tall to fly jets, so I told them I'd contact them when I wanted to come back. It's a decision I regret. Um, I've known Tom Clark for too long. He was a year behind me in college, and we formed a friendship. He is a great gentleman. If you ever speak to any of his students or, uh, even his colleagues, he, uh, he has done a lot for veterans, he did a lot for Lake Central, and, uh, he would do a great job with this museum. The Board of Directors and other members that are on this, uh, board, they have the right idea, and they do wanna promote Shererville, and the people that I have spoken with around... And the people that I have spoken with around the nation, I have some contacts and I'm going to pass those on to Tom and others. It's a great idea and I think we might be able to find help nationwide. So please, you know, when you decide on this, please vote yes.
State your name and your address, sir, for the record.
James Gravago, 1438 Somerset, Munster, Indiana. I want to thank you.
I'm Kathleen Camarena. I'm with the Disabled American Veterans Chapter 17 in Hammond. I'm with here with Jim. We want to speak about the upcoming walk.
The DAV Walk. Thank you for your support on that. Like everybody's supported our multiple veterans organizations through the American Legion, the VFW, the DAV and others. And we want to thank you for your past support. Most of the people in the room have worked with Tom Clark for years. We go to the Lake Central Veterans Breakfast and spend time, so we, we, there's a big group of us that will be supporting him besides you guys. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, I would just like to say, I'm a retired major in the United States Army Reserve. I served 23 years. My father's a Vietnam veteran. When I moved back to Northwest Indiana, I had the opportunity to join the Disabled American Veterans Chapter 17 and become a member of the American Legion Post 16 in Munster. I cannot tell you the impact of these gentlemen in these seats that have had on me and my generation. The legacy that they are creating for my generation and for generations to come is so direly needed. My generation needs to step up and take the mantle and the baton from all of these Vietnam veterans that are sitting in these seats. And I hope and I pray to Almighty God that you will vote yes for this museum. This country needs this museum. Northwest Indiana needs this museum to continue our patriotism. Our country's divided. We need to support our veterans, law enforcement, all of our first responders. And so please, we are humbly asking you to vote yes for this museum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else? Anybody else? Okay, seeing or hearing none, we are now going to close the floor. And at this time, we are going to call upon Mr. Jarvis and Mr. Clark to do their presentation.
Good evening, President Gutsloff and fellow council members. Thank you for listening to our idea of having a veterans museum located in Sherrville, Indiana that I've been proud to live here since 1982. And at this time, I'd like to thank all the veterans in the audience for your support and the time that you've given and the service you've given. And now, it's my opportunity to try and pay back. I'm requesting the permission of the town council to build the National Crossroads Museum. I'm going to be the executive director of that museum. Tom Clark will be the curator. We have outgrown the current location at the Safety Village. I was instrumental as well as Clark at getting that built, but we only had a small pad to build it on. It's visited constantly and we just need to do something different. Twelve to 15,000 square feet is what we're proposing. And it will be an asset to the community and will draw interest from all over the nation to visit Sherrville, Indiana. This time, I'd like to introduce Tom Clark, 40-year veteran of Lake Central School, I'll put it. Also a veteran of Afghanistan and the museum curator. Tom, would you speak now?
First, my name is Tom Clark. I live at 2824 Lindy Circle in Dyer. I was a teacher at Lake Central for 40 years. But first, I'd like to thank the town council for considering our proposal for a veterans museum at Indiana Speedway. A little about me, I was a teacher at Lake Central for 40 years. And I'll tell you what, never did I ever think that anything like what we have today would occur. At 1983, the Marines were bombed at Beirut, Lebanon. Two individuals from Northwest Indiana lost their lives. I thought, "How can I connect these students with the events taking place in Beirut, Lebanon?" Well, I had them start writing letters to the, to the survivors. And the letters were coming back from the survivors and they were incredible. They were talking about Marines, many of these Marines that came in as replacements were coming out of the invasion of Grenada. And I thought, "This is incredible." And we put the letters in a display case at the school, in the library. And what happened was the students were really interested in this. And one lady approached me, a custodian there, and she said, "Would you like to talk to Danny Estes' grandmother?" And Danny Estes was from Black Oak and he had lost his life in Beirut. Tom Thorstad was from Chesterton. He lost his life in Beirut. So I went up to talk to Mrs. Danny Estes' grandmother and she gave me a whole lot of his things. And I'm thinking, "What do I do with all these items?" And I put them on display in the school. This actually started bringing history alive. And then about six months later, I was hit with a bombshell. I went out to the Thorstad, Thorstad family's house in Chesterton and my wife went with me. And I'll never forget it as long as I live. This is the first Gold Star family I had really encountered. Mr. Thorstad brought out his uniform, Tom's uniform, and he had it covered in plastic and his hands were shaking. And he said to me, he said, "Would you like this?" And I didn't know how to answer that. I said, "Yes." And then his mother, his mother said, "Would you like more of his stuff?" And we went, she took me into the dining room and the dining room table was loaded with stuff. And she goes, "Take what you want." He went to Chesterton High School. And I said, "I don't know what to take." She goes, "Take it all." And that's, those are the items, they, they, that, his personal items and stuff like that that need to be put on display so people understand what this country has gone through, a terrorist bombing in 1983. And then, I had this idea and it was from a young boy named Doug DeVries, who was in my class. And Doug said, "Hey, why don't we do something for the boys from Lake Central High School that died in Vietnam?" And I was brand-new teacher, I was like in my third or fourth year, and I felt like nobody from this school died in Vietnam. Well, this young kid, a junior, took, didn't take that as an answer. He found two names. Then I found, we found two more names over the summer. And then, a police officer in Dyer called and said, his name was Tom Hoffman, he said, "You forgot a boy. His name was William Darrell Trent." William Darrell Trent received the nation's second highest award for valor. The Navy Cross for saving like 40 individuals' lives. Well, over the years, I thought, we had a, we had a program. In fact, I've met many of these veterans at that first program back in 86. And I thought, "This has got to be the high point of my career." And then, the students came to me, students from the high school came to me and said, "We want to do something like that with you, Mr. Clark, again." So the next year, I thought, "Oh, we'll do Lake County." And I thought, "Lake County, this is tragic." I thought, "Lake County had lost 40. Lake County had lost 261." So now starts a quest to go out and find 261 Gold Star families and sit down and talk to them about their sons and daughters. And at first, our ideas were just to get the records and our idea was to get a photograph, but then the moms started saying, and the dads started saying, "Would you like their letters? Would you like their uniforms? Would you like their medals?" And we took that stuff in and started building up a huge collection. And that's from students, young people that did this. I know one weekend, ho, I'll never forget this weekend as long as I live. We went out and did four families in one single weekend, two on Saturday and two on Sunday. And I'm telling you, I was a basket case after talking to these, these parents. And that had been 20, 30 years. Now those moms and dads are gone, but their wives are around, their sons, their daughters, their relatives are still around, and we have preserved those items. When I was at Lake Central, I was a coach. I was also a club sponsor. I went to, I got crazy. When I was 51 years old, I went to Afghanistan. And at first, they told me, "You're too old." But then the National Guard let me in and we went to Afghanistan. I had to sign for one year. I was only allowed to serve for one year. And we went to Afghanistan. It was one of the, I don't know, one of the most touching experiences of my life. Because there, I saw something that was quite unique. I was in high school during the Vietnam War and probably, in the ma, in the mind of a 17 and 18-year-old, I couldn't wait. I thought, I was praying that Vietnam would continue so I could go. But then when I went to Afghanistan, I had a different attitude. I went there to try and help people. And it made sense. All of these stories and everything just gelled of what we had talked about with these families and everything, how the sac, the great sacrifices that individuals had made for this country. This project has gone on for 37-plus years and it's done, this is why it's so important to museum here, it's done by local students, which many of them are in this, in this room today. Many of you know me. And it's, 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 it'll become a showcase, a showcase of what these, these individuals did, how they sacrificed their lives, how these, these gentlemen back here went off to war, war for this country so that we could all experience freedoms that we do today. We've been interviewed by the Wall Street Journal. We've been interviewed by Channel 9 News and many others. Over the years, I've always told the students, and you must listen to this, you are not only learning history, but you are writing it. They were recording the history of all these individuals because what we did, we made a jump. We completed Lake County, we moved into Porter County, Newton County, and then we took on all 92 counties of Indiana. 1,621 from the state of Indiana. And the students were selected by Joe Kernan when he was, he was still mayor, I believe, of South Bend. And he selected them to do all the research. And the students, because the students were finding misspelled names, the students were finding incorrect names, and they had, they had left 100-plus names off the list. The students just rectified that with their research. This is students, high school students, 16-year-olds, 17-year-olds, 18-year-olds. The power is beyond belief. I mean, they inspired me as a teacher. That's why I stayed and that's why, even though I've been retired, I say two years and really three years, I wished I had stayed. I loved it. I loved it. These students are just incredible. And one of the students, I'm glad you recognized him, Aaron Ampmeyer. He was one of my students. And I can't tell you, I mean, the things I've read today online were so typical. Every time I saw him, he brought a smile to my face. One day at Lake Central, I'd left my wallet, of all things, in a washroom. He called me up and to tell me, "Hey, Mr. Clark, you left your wallet in the washroom and come get it." And he, and, and what we did, he brought in stories of his grandfather who had been in World War II. And this is another thing the students do. This is why this museum is very important to veterans. We found out that his dad, his grandfather had the Bronze Star, the nation's fourth highest award, coming and had never been awarded. So the students did the research and they sent out the paperwork and the Bronze Star. And not only that, he was awarded the Purple Heart and all of his awards came out free of charge. We need a museum. We need a museum, the whole house, and showcase the research of the thousands of students that have worked over the years, 37-plus years. I still have students coming. In fact, one of them is here tonight, one that, one that wrote all the stories for the memorial across the street, Allison. She came. The project has expanded to the revolution, the Civil War, Indian Wars, Spanish-American War, World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam and Iraq, the Gulf War, also 1991, Afghanistan and Iraq. The purpose of the museum will offer a window into the past as an educational tool for the past and the future of this country. The scope of the museum will be an original project, will include artifacts. There are hun, there's a binder out here with the letters from one boy that died and his name is on that memorial. 150 binders with letters, probably there may be more than that, with letters of individuals that died. Historians 100 years from now are going to do backflips when they read these, these stories. The museum will be a place where Americans can go and see the great sacrifices the men and women have made that, that ensure our freedoms, all of our freedoms. Once again, I would like to thank the town council, all of these wonderful veterans that have shown up and the people of Sherrville. I am now, very limited in time and I probably went over the time, I'm sorry. That's a teacher in me, you know. But I, I can take any questions if you have any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Tom, how much acreage are you looking for?
We need about two to three acres. That's it. We just need two, need two or three acres. We can do the rest. You know, and I want to thank you too for allowing me to be at the Safety Village. But if we've outgrown that, I've got three, I don't know if he showed it, we, I've got three 10-by-20 containers or U-Locks full of stuff. I have my box on the premise on the, you know, the Safety Village full of stuff. There's so much stuff. There's so many stories and it's just constantly, people are bringing in things. And most of it is, are things that I have acquired over the years, but it needs to be preserved. It needs to be preserved. And here's one thing I found myself saying to the students. I said, "War is terrible, but when I look at the citations for valor from these guys, these guys were being given citations for valor for saving people's lives, giving their lives to save others." To me, that is really noble. That is very noble. And I think it was a good lesson for the students to learn. But thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of things I should clarify. The Veterans Museum, the Fire Museum and the NIPSCO Museum, or Training Center was all built by the trades free of charge at the Safety Village. They will be part of this, building this. So there won't be any labor. Materials, one thing the Safety Village taught me was how to get donations, how to get grants. In fact, I was in an event today with NIPSCO already discussing the Veterans Museum for Sherrville. So all we're looking for from Sherrville is the land. We'll get the building built. So make sure you're clear on that. Because last night at your conversation, you were worried about millions of dollars building this, building that. Not going to be part of this. It's going to be built not with taxpayer dollars, but taxpayers' donations and the community's donations and national donations. So one thing I've learned from the Safety Village, I know how to beg and I will get the job done. So don't concern yourself with that kind of money. Last but not least, I want to recognize the Davis family that are here. Kathy Davis, David Davis. David just passed the other day. I miss him so much. He worked at the Safety Village for like 13 years. He was Army, I think it was, what was it Kathy, 30 years?
36.
36 years in the Army giving and came to the Safety Village and worked for pennies just maintaining the Safety Village. That's kind of veterans we have in this community. You need to support them. And I just wanted to recognize David because just lost a good friend. Thank you. Any questions for me at all?
Any other questions?
No.
Councils? No, that's good, Bill. Thank you.
All right.
Bill, thank you. Mr. Clark, thank you. And thank you to all the veterans out there for your service. All right, very good. All right, there is no old business, so we'll go on to new business. There is a public hearing for ordinance number 2028, which is an ordinance amending the wholesale water tracker component of the rates and charges. amending the wholesale water tracker component of the rates and charges collected by the town of Sherrville. At this time, I will open the floor to any comments regarding that resolution. Any comments? Any comments regarding that resolution? Seeing or hearing none, I will now close the floor.
Mr. President.
Yes?
The record should reflect timely publication of one newspaper publication. There was a shortage by one day of the second.
Okay.
Public hearing notice in the Times newspaper, it's nine days, not ten. Everything else went out on time, came back and was published on time.
Okay.
My recommendation to you is that the, um, irreg, irregularity of nine days versus ten days in one of the two newspapers be waived.
Okay.
So in any action that occurs, I recommend that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Austin.
So move on that.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on ordinance twenty-twenty-eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five-zero.
Mr. President, I, I feel like after that presentation, I feel like us as a council, we might want to discuss what was asked of us, what was presented to us, and what we think about this presentation and, and things. Is that inappropriate at this time, or do you think?
Uh, no, but we can, uh, if we can get an adopt for that, that, that resolution.
Yeah, bifurcation of.
Yeah, on that ordinance, I mean. Do we have a motion on that, to adopt ordinance, uh, twenty-twenty-eight?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries five-zero.
Mr. President, this will be published again with a notice of adoption in the newspapers.
Okay, all right. So Mr., Mr. Caleb, you want to move the? Is that, do you want to move it up, is that what you want to do?
Well, there's, there's nothing on our agenda as far as, um, dealing with this, it's just a presentation, and I guess I felt like, uh, we left it kind of hanging there, they all came, they talked, and I think they're looking for our response, or, or at least a comment, uh, from the council. I mean, me personally, I love it, I think it's a great idea. Uh, certainly, if you guys are able to find the funding to build this building, and we've got the property, because I, I doubt that we need every acre at Eliana to do what we want to do there, and it's a, it's a, it's maybe not exactly consistent with the recreational use that we're planning for that property, but it's a good location. It's right on thirty, it's good access in and out, and if we're, if we're able to set aside some property there, I, I think it's, it's a good use for it, um, if we have extra property. But we also have other properties in Sherrville that could also be, be used for this too, potentially, and, and we may just have to explore that, but that's just my comment at this point.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of potential here, and I think, you know, from my perspective, I'm in support, one, one way or the other, we need to find a way to make this happen.
Yeah, I talked. Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Clark before the meeting, property we have, providing the property to all of you is not a problem at all. Um, we're not going to utilize all the acreage at Eliana, you know, for our park. Um, we've got, what, seventy acres, I think we've?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three, but who's counting? Um, so I think there's plenty of room there, and I'm also in favor. Thanks, Caleb, for following up.
I, I really don't think there's one council member up here that is opposed to giving the veterans the property. You certainly have done a lot for this country to keep us, uh, safe, and so that we can be a free country, so, um.
Mr. President, should we? Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're going to have several conversations, several, another meeting real soon on the Eliana property, and I think at that time is when, uh, the council here will show support to incorporate, uh, some land, uh, for that purpose, and I, like, um, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Conley stated, and, and Rob, uh, we naturally, all of us would be in support of that.
I agree as well, I think it would be a fantastic addition. Um, if anyone hasn't had a chance to see Mr. Clark's work, I believe there is some outside, um, that, um, you can look at. I've seen it firsthand at the Safety Village, and I know that it has outgrown the Safety Village, and would love for it to, um, stay in Sherrville, I think that would be a fantastic location for it. And I think it would be, fit into our recreation, because for a lot of us, um, we would enjoy, um, going to see it, it would be recreation for us to go visit the museum, so yes, I agree, deserve a spot.
So, so I, I don't, I don't think you'll get a vote tonight, though, to say that we're going to do it, but I mean, you do have it on, on videotape, that's for sure, so.
Times five.
Times five, so, you know, it is a certain thing, it's just I think we need to have a little more discussion about, uh, where we want to put it, and, uh, and move on from there. So, um, if you'd like to stay for the meeting tonight, you're more than welcome to, it's all, I haven't seen a full house like this since the last time I said something wrong.
Thank you.
But, thank you.
God bless, thank you for your service.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So, um, so yeah, like I said, you guys want to stay, if you want to leave, this, this is a good time to do it. Um, have a safe night for those who are leaving, and God bless you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you, thank you.
Good job, Caleb.
I don't even know why I jumped in in the middle of the motion.
Glad you did, because I felt kind of funny.
I just wanted to.
But I just felt so.
They helped, that was amazing.
I felt so awkward, like they were ready.
All right, if we can get back to the meeting, please? Resolution twenty-twenty-five-eight. Okay. All right, now it looks like our normal meeting night. All right, uh, resolution twenty-twenty-five-dash-eight is a resolution to transfer funds within a category of appropriations. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, these transfer requests were from departments head, department heads that identified certain line items in their budget that have become negative, or will become negative in the future, so these were just transferring within their department into different line items to, uh, make them whole, put them in the black.
Okay, thank you. Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve, resolution twenty-twenty-five-dash-eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five-zero. Resolution twenty-twenty-five-dash-nine is a resolution of the town of Sherrville, Lake County, Indiana, opposing the proposed closure of the Sherrville BBM, BMV branch. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, this is a resolution, um, that we came up with because we're, we've heard from residents that they're not happy with our BMV closing, at least my experience, you know, you go over there, it's pretty busy all the time. Um, I don't, I don't see why it needs to be closed, and, um, we've, we've heard from residents saying the same. There is a meeting tomorrow night in this very room at six o'clock, um, it's a public hearing, and that's the topic of discussion for tomorrow night, and we felt it, uh, was appropriate to have a resolution opposing, and if you guys are on the same level as most people are, thank you.
And thanks, Jim. I, I reached out to the Secretary of Transportation on Monday, Matt Ubelor, who oversees the BMV, you know, and voiced our concern about a closing, you know, they're providing, you know, they're, they're collecting excise tax, and they're providing a service to taxpayers, so it makes no sense why they would even consider it. You know, it serves a tri-town area, right? So we got, what, seventy, eighty thousand people in the tri-town area alone that it serves, you know, in the town of Highland. He did say that the, the decision wasn't final. I said, good, I hope you reevaluate, you know, this consideration, and, you know, expect an abundance of people at the hearing, uh, because it shouldn't close.
Just, just for clarification, though, that's, that's a hearing being held by the state of Indiana Bureau Motor Vehicles, not the town of Sherrville, to close the BMV.
That is correct.
We're opposing it here tonight with a resolution.
Right. Yes.
I just want to make sure it's clear. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I move to approve, uh, sending the resolution, uh, passing twenty-twenty-five-dash-nine, which opposes the closing of the BMV.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five-zero.
Yeah, I wish it was our vote.
Yeah, really. Uh, D is consider acceptance of proposal for engineering services for the Sherrville Central Fire Station Phase Two from NICE Engineering, not to exceed the amount of ninety-six-thousand three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Neil?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a continuation of the Phase One work, which involved the plating of the site and initial site investigation, wetland coordination with Soil Solutions, as well as the providing of information to CSK Architects, and our initial site survey of the property. So this work would be continuation of that, and the site layout of all utilities, sanitary, sewer, storm, water, uh, again, coordinating with the architect for the specific building layout, uh, in terms of elevation and orientation, uh, on a rotational basis on that site, and then providing a, uh, access for the Emmanuel Presbyterian Church to the south, which is part of an agreement that you had for purchasing that project, uh, that, that property, and then complete design engineering within five feet of the building, the architect will complete everything within five feet of the building, and then we'll prepare, uh, secure permits for IDAM, DNR, and all federal-state, uh, regulatory agencies, and then prepare bid packages to get that project out to bid when the council determines that to be, uh, financially feasible, and then prepare a bid tabulation and report, uh, consistent with the recommendation for award moving forward with the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
Pleasure of the board, then?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Yes, please. I, I'd like to comment, I think with our uncertainty financially going forward here, um, I think that this is imprudent, I think that ninety-six thousand dollars to do engineering for something that we don't know if we can afford to build, it just doesn't make sense. Um, I don't know when we're going to be able to build or need to build the fire station, but it seems like it isn't right now because of all these financial uncertainties that we have, and I, I just, I think it's, it's improper for us as a town council to spend this money.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So we have four to one. The next one is to consider approval of agreement between Lake County Parks and Recreation and the town of Sherrville, southeast corner of Austin and Seaburger. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the council decided back in February of this year that we were going to help, uh, with the purchase of, uh, property at the corner of Seaburger and Austin, it's, uh, Lake County Parks, and, uh, we had an agreement to participate in that, uh, purchase, which was an amount of fifty thousand dollars, and we were advised by our attorney that we should have an agreement on file with the county, so this is that agreement.
Okay. Pleasure of the board?
Move, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries five-zero. Consider acceptance of donations of six thousand two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and forty-one cents. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, uh, donation fund for Town Hall from Albert Chisholm on Matthews Lane, Demets or Demets Turtles, Ghirardelli Milk Chocolate Caramels, Andy's Cream Demand Thins, amount of sixteen dollars, Kim Patel Jersey Mikes, half a dozen, half a dozen Dunkin' Donuts, eleven dollars and ninety-nine cents, Burke Auto Tech, two dozen Kunchkis, forty-eight dollars, Anonymous Salesman, one dozen Rise and Roll Donuts, twenty-five dollars, Kim Patel Jersey Mikes, half a dozen donuts, eleven dollars and ninety-nine cents, for a total of one twelve ninety-eight, in a donation fund for animal control, Anna Maria Baker, one hundred dollars, Brandy Leap, sixty-five dollars, total monetary animal control donations, one sixty-five. We also have, uh, Goods, um, anonymous kitty food, kitten food, I'm sorry, cat food, two hundred dollars, Dan McClure Dry Food, Milk Bones, a hundred and thirty dollars, Dan McClure Wet Cat Food, thirty-five dollars, Anonymous Cat Carriers Accessories, Cat Food and Dog Treats, two hundred and fifty dollars, Jackie Brewer Dog Pads, two, um, sorry, two hundred and ninety dollars, Michelle Staley, a dog leash, ten dollars, Anonymous Dog Food Treats, Cat Treats, Used Toys, a hundred and fifty dollars, um, Stephanie Bodinger Cat Food, thirty dollars, Anonymous Wet Dog Food, Dog Boots, sixty dollars, Dire Animal Control Clinic, or, I'm sorry, Di, Dire Animal Clinic, Dog and Cat Food Treats, one thousand dollars, Anonymous Dog Food Treats, Cat Treats, Unused Toy, or Used Toys, thirty dollars, Anonymous Tow, from Anonymous Towels, uh, twenty dollars, for a total, uh, in-kind donations, two thousand two-hundred-and-five dollars. For the Farini Dog Park, Jonathan Noonan, seven hundred and seventeen dollars, total dog park donations, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Page two. Veterans Memorial, Johnny Hamel, one hundred and fifty dollars, for a total Veterans Memorial donation of one hundred and fifty dollars. Donation to the Police Fund, David Smalner, Apple Strudel, four dollars and ninety-nine cents, Nova Celluloid Residence Homemade Cookies as a thank you for leading parade, ten dollars, McDonald's, eighteen fifty-five US forty-one, twenty-one Happy Meals for Cop Camp, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and nineteen cents, Eat the Cake, New Bakery, nine-piece cheesecake sampler and four cobblers, one hundred and thirty-three dollars, total policeman in-kind donations, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents. Donation Fund for National Night Out, JBR and Sons LLC, two hundred dollars, Eddie Kay's Collision, one hundred and fifty dollars, KB Tire, one hundred dollars, Richard Gigolo, Giglio, Giglio, I'm sorry, twenty-five dollars, Sherrville Auto Sales, five hundred dollars, Heritage Dental Studio, five hundred dollars, Motorex Auto Sales, one hundred dollars, Sherrville Civic Fund, two hundred dollars, Red Fruit LLC Tomato Bar, uh, three hundred dollars, Sherrville Police Department, Albert's Jewellery Tip Jar, thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents, New Jerk Goodie, fifty dollars, uh, Denico Inc., one hundred dollars, Wood Jalapenos Inc., one hundred dollars, total roofing and construction, two hundred dollars, Committee to Elect Jason Gore, fifty dollars, total National Night Out donations, two thousand six-hundred-and-thirteen dollars, total in-kind donations, twenty-six hundred dollars and sixteen cents, total monetary donations, three thousand six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents, for a grand total of six thousand two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and forty-one cents.
Thank you, Jim. Pleasure of the board? Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five-zero. At this time, I will take any comments from the floor. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from the floor? Hearing or seeing none, this meeting's adjourned, thank you.